October 16th, 2:00 PM. Joint Workshop Meeting with the Port of Brookings Harbor and the Curry County Commissioners. I'd like to start the meeting if we could by everyone just kind of introducing yourself for the record.
Ken Range, Port Commissioner.
Joe Spear, Port Commissioner.
Sharon Hartung, Port Commissioner.
Alright, and then we have Julie Schmelzer, Course Commissioner Boyce, myself, Commissioner Pash, Commissioner Gold, Council Huddle, and JJ, our right hand.
Oh, yeah.
Are the microphones on, are those mics on? And then, yeah, on the ends if you wouldn't mind putting the lapel mics on so that we can hear you and make sure that each unit is on, for the record. Just speak into it, do a test on it.
Switch on the top.
Yes.
That's good, there you go.
We can hear, we can hear just...
What was that? We were just bragging about our program.
There he comes. Turn that one back on again.
Yours is fine. Um, is that yours?
Yes.
Richard went off.
We thought he was gonna leave after that.
Alright, so let's go ahead and get started and we'll get a new mic here in a second. Ms. Schmelzer, did you want to start the meeting?
Sure.
Check, check.
Gary and his staff had contacted me to ask if we would be interested in having a joint meeting with the Port Commission, and I said, certainly we would. So, um, got it scheduled. My understanding is there were two important items they wanted to discuss. One was sedimentation and economic development, but leave it open to discuss other things as well, so we can start building a relationship whereby we can meet quarterly perhaps, just to continue the dialogue and see how we can help you and basically how we can improve things for the county.
Thank you, Julie.
Alright, so why don't, if you'd like to, maybe your board, talk about, a little bit about what you're here for and what you'd like to talk with us about, and we've got our Roadmaster, Richard Christiansen, here as well.
What I'd like to do, Chair, is have Gary start the meeting out for us. Gary and Travis, please let them start out, and then the Commission can kick in.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind then give them one of the mics and you can go to the guys, go to the podium, because everything of course has to be recorded. Uh, one of the big mics here would be great. Just, yeah, you can take her right out of the hole, there you go.
I think what you're gonna find, Chair Chris, is he'll get initiated and then the Board will have questions for you.
Perfect.
Alright.
There we go.
Can you hear me? Pack it here. Okay, does this thing working?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. Alright, um, thank you for meeting today, all the Commissioners. So the first item that we have here is the county culverts entering the port property. Provided pictures of four, I think, I believe it's four different areas, one, two, three, four or five areas. So on the, on the first page, the most concern we have is our boatyard 84-inch culvert, which is, as I understand, it's a county easement pipe that's coming into our basin. And you can see the pictures on the right-hand side of the debris coming in of the port. This, this culvert here, we actually dredged several times in the past several years. That's the most recent picture of what it looks like now. We took a picture inside of a manhole, there's debris inside the pipe. Then, the third picture on the right-hand side, on the lower side, is the sediment basin that actually the county digs out on a regular basis. You can see inside, it's about half-full of debris that's leading towards the port, so there's quite a amount of material inside that pipe.
So, is more debris and sediment coming down as a result of the Cheko Bar fire? I remember you coming and talking about that a little bit.
Yeah, the Chek, so, these culverts here have nothing to do with the Cheko Bar fire.
Okay.
These are coming from the harbor and 101 side of the, of the area, the east side of harbor.
Real quick though, um, because we're about ready to have some, you know, rain events for the winter season, does, does the additional rain that pushes through this culvert in the winter help push some of that sediment back out and then slowly gathers back in there during the year, or is it a one-time thing?
I, it's a, well, it's a one-time thing at every storm, more material comes down the hill and enters the pipe and then enters the port.
I misspoke, I meant a continual.
Yeah, continual.
It just gets, it keeps adding too, is that what's happening?
So one storm won't, won't help, the additional sea, you know, cubic feet per minute won't help push it out, or?
Which, which is, I don't know if anybody's ever figured out where all this material's coming from, but there's a lot of material coming down, it's been happening over the years. When I first showed up, 2015, we dredged out the area, and two years later, 2017, we dredged out 3,000 cubic yards, and here's a pile again. So, it's a continuous, for this spot, it's, it's continuous.
Can I ask, we can kind of take these step-by-step, uh, Roadmaster, are you familiar with this?
Yes, very.
Could you come? I mean, is, and you can stay up there, I'm just wondering, this is something that he says that you've dredged already to help clean up some of this, or help clean out the front of it, excavated it. Do we know where all this is coming from?
Not exactly, uh, but it's Harbor Hills, most likely. And I started working on this project when I first started working here about a year and a half ago, and I've been working with Travis and Gary since then, and been trying to identify all the issues. There's been flooding down there for like 30 years or more historically, and so my engineering team asked me if I would help with that, said sure. So I go, let's see the maps, well, we don't have any maps. And so we started a mapping project to figure out where everything's going down there. And then I looked into a project that the City of Brookings and the county partnered in, it was this 2007 HE Storm Water, Storm Surface Water Facility Plan. And Brookings put a lot of information of deficiencies on their side of the river in this plan, but the county and the port didn't put any information, and it's, it's pretty much everything down there is hunky-dory. But these issues have been happening like for 30 years, so it wasn't put into this plan. So, I found many deficiencies, like the one Gary's talking about, and, uh, what it really needs to happen is this, I reached out to Brookings Planning Department, didn't give me any feedback that I want to update this plan, if they want to partner on it, no feedback, but what I really suggest is that the port and the county partner up and update the Harbor Hills and the port part of this plan, to identify all these deficiencies, find out where all this material is coming from, and once we identify them and we have them in the plan and it's engineered, we can work together to pursue funding, to make these repairs. And there's so many deficiencies out there, and what, the one that Gary's talking about is a sedimentation basin on the Tuttle Creek basin that the city, I mean, the county got easements from the port to put in this 84-inch culvert with this large detention basin, I believe it was sized for a 25-year rain event. Well, you know, we, we've been having 50-year rain events, and so all this water comes down off Harbor Hills through this sedimentation basin, and they'll fill it up in one event. And, you know, Travis will call me and go, hey, Rich, this thing's full, we'll go dig it out. And we typically have always dug it out twice a year. And, uh, so now I, I've made a special project number just for, so we could track when we clean it out. And, uh, but if it's designed for a 25-year rain event and you have all this sediment coming down, you have 50-year rain events, it's not gonna have the capacity for that, and it's gonna enter the harbor, and that's what I see happening there. So, you know, that could be something that would be in an update of this facility plan, that there needs to be a second basin maybe put in. And I've talked with Travis and Gary about that, but this is just one of several storm drain creeks that enter into port. The port, you know, before the port was there, there was creeks there, and it was just all full of gravel. Well, all the gravel on the mounts are always gonna go to the port, and, so, a lot of these pipes were installed without permits probably, and not sized for 25-year rain events, they were sized for whatever people had at the time when they put them in. And, the county doesn't have any easements crossing the port that we can find, except for the one for Tuttle Creek. These other, there's like five other major pipes that cross that have other deficiencies that we're trying to map out, and, uh, I've been trying to get that done, but I ran into some problems with DEQ, and we're trying to get things TV'd, and a contractor come in here and work with the port, but just haven't been able to put it together.
Okay. Commissioner Gold?
So I have a question, if you find out that it's coming from Harbor Hills, could those residents up in that area, or how could we get funding to take care of the problem?
I think you could find all the deficiencies, and then if they're on private property, have the property owner, abate them and have the property owners fix them. And, what City of Brookings has done in the past by work there, if a property owner brought up their storm drain to a city standard, that the city, and put it in a city standard easement, the city would, uh, they could take it to the council for having it taken into the city inventory. And so I've been trying to use that same process here, it really worked well with the City of Brookings. And so what I was trying to, talking, uh, with Gary and Travis about is, maybe we could put something together where we could work together, do a facility plan, we each pay for our own sections, we each pay for our own cleaning, we identify all the issues, and we work together chasing funding, because if we work together, we have more power and we can have a better grant application. And once the pipes are brought up to a county standard with sedimentations that would protect the port, I would suggest that the county take those on and assume the responsibility of those pipes and sedimentation basins and easements, because we have the facilities and the equipment to do that, we have excavators, we have dump trucks, where we could go in there after every storm event, muck them out, and, uh, and at low cost, where it, it, right now, it's extremely high cost, all this material coming off the mountain, Harbor Hills, going through private culverts, state highway culverts, then private culverts under the county road, which we only have a short piece, and then through the port, it's, it's a mess.
Commissioner Boyce, did you?
Thank you, yeah. Uh, Mr. Dillinger, did you have a report, because if you do, I'd like to hear that report, beginning to end, before we bring this into discussion, I think that's the best interest of our time, Mr. Chair. I know that, I've never heard Harbor Hills before, you know, I've, I've wanted to really make the logical, it comes a logical conclusion, it's come from the Cheko Bar fire, especially after last winter, when you got instead of 4,000 tons, you got 40,000 tons. So, do you have a five or 10-minute report you wanted to make here? Because that's who I want to hear from right now.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one quick question before you quit, Rich. I think what we need to do is get to the heart of the problem and try to fix, fix the, the reason for this happening, and so, do we have any standards for the culverts up in, in Harbor Hills for private and all of that, so that we wouldn't have this problem continuously? You have to get to the root of the problem if you're gonna solve it.
I, I agree, I, I think that's a, this document would also be a planning tool to help with development, with their standards for retaining water when they're developing, and a lot of that development up there's been without maybe following any standard through planning to limit development in their, their water coming off the hill, I don't know.
So I think that's gonna be up to the county to set up those standards.
Yes, and, and that could be all done in this facility plan.
Okay.
Alright, let's go ahead and continue then.
I don't really have a report per se, but I gave you an update as to what we're dealing with FEMA and Cheko Bar fire impact of the port. So 2017, we had an engineer do a survey of our basins, so we have a baseline, and that was just shortly after the Cheko Bar fire. And then he did another report roughly two years later, in July of this year, and found that we had 40,000 cubic yards in that two-year period. The rain events happened in 2018, wasn't as significant as they were 2019, so we kind of figured 2019 was probably the bigger event bringing in the sediment. So, the, so I'm dealing with FEMA right now to try to dredge out 40,000 cubic yards, that includes the material coming out of these culverts as well. So, we believe majority of the material's coming from Cheko Bar fire. So every time we have probably large rain events, we're gonna have a large amount of sediment come down and impact the port. So, um, of course this meeting here, we're, we're talking about the culverts, we, we do have, like I said, the 84-inch is, is a pretty significant culvert, that's, you can see the logged material in our, in our basins, but another culvert on page, if you flip the page, I don't have these pages numbered, numbered unfortunately, but on 36-inch culvert that's at the retail parking lot, um, so that culvert is a 36-inch, and it's, at the beginning, it's half-full. This culvert, we're actually having problems when we have a large rain event that fills up, and actually overflows onto the road, which enters our main, um, retail entrance, and then all the water shoots across the port property and it enters a private property. So, we do have, we have issues there, and, right now, if it's half-full, it's only half-capacity. So, if it's cleaned out, it may handle all the water, it may not be a, you know, a private issue. So, and also this, the same pipeline is actually, or culvert is actually depositing a lot of material in our basin one as well, which you can see in pictures on the very top there. So, I don't know if that answered your question about the raw report.
I just want the public to know, and I want to make sure we're on the same page, and I think in terms of priority and issues and damage to the port, I mean, we have the burden of proof on us, I believe, to prove that it's coming from the Cheko Bar fire.
Right.
And, uh, you know, we got our 480,000-whatever to study the Rogue Basin project, we've been trying to figure out a way to maneuver some of that funds to the other two Curry County Ports, in particular Brookings Harbor. And so, um, just determining that is the best way, and if that needs to be developed in a plan between the county and the port, the cities, absolutely that's the direction we, I presume we would want to go, but, uh, I, I assume that most, a good portion of today would be discussing this issue, and the sheer amount, and the pictures are very helpful, yeah, I took a picture, uh, two weeks ago on that west side, and no boat, no boats parked on the, you know, that, that, that series of docks, and, yeah, it's heartbreaking. So, I know that the damage it's doing to all of your efforts in this, in your board, so, um, yes, you answered my question and that helps, and when you can just visualize 10 times the amount of normal aggregate that's coming down that river on an average year, I mean, that is staggering, and we need to, we need to get on the rooftops and shout it out, I think.
Right.
And, and I'm promoting that around the state as best I can, absolutely.
Okay. Do you have anything further?
Um, no, I don't think so unless my board has any questions.
Well, yeah, that's, um, we're gonna, next, I think he said, Roy said he wanted to have the board then address us, so.
I'd like to ask Gary to tell the County Commissioner Board what DEQ told the port management team about cleaning those culverts out, or if nothing goes in the basin out of those culverts?
Might, might be better from the Roadmaster, he's, Richard's been dealing with them directly.
Um, in other words, the cleanup process is almost impossible because of the way DEQ has mandated it to be done and not to be done, so, yeah.
That's correct.
This man has been readily available 24/7, we call him, he comes down with Allen Avery right now every time.
Yeah, it's, uh, we ran afoul of DEQ on this very location, this 36-inch culvert, we were mapping out there, because we didn't know where these pipes were going, we were running our jet router down these lines to see where it popped up at another catch basin or manhole, because, and, uh, we were mapping everything, and we spent over $64,000 on this project right now with mapping, fixing drains and things, and engineering, we've hired Dire Partnership on this very drain to check the capacity issues. But, the thing is, is that this port is, falls under several jurisdictions, with US Army Corvina Engineers, DS Department of State Lands, DEQ, ODFW, and they all have their rules, and there's, I believe it's a 401 permitting process, it's a very in-depth process that you have to get, and, uh, and if there's like a drop of dirt that gets into that port while we're working, it's a Class 1 violation, because that's what we're dealing with right now. And so, it's, you know, I tried to explain to DEQ, we'll get 99.9% of the material out of that pipe and in a truck and into a landfill, but no, if one drop of dirt gets in there, you're killing baby cohoes, it's really harsh line. And, uh, but anyways, so that's what we're kind of dealing with, and I was trying to get it together this fall, then the rains came early, and we can't deal with the water flows coming down that creek that goes into this basin through this specific, uh, 36-inch pipe, and with the 401 permitting, there was no way I could get it done this fall. So, it's kind of taking a backseat to like maybe next year, next fall, to try to clean this pipe, because if we do anything with it right now, I mean, if we loosen up a rock and it rolls out that end of pipe and DEQ's there, Class 1 violation.
Commissioner Gold?
So, question, would DEQ rather, rather have a whole lot of sediment coming out because of overflow of water, rather than working on it to get cleaned up properly?
Mr. Davis, if you would pull that mic a little closer to you, thank you.
We've, uh, we've been told by DEQ, and maybe Gary could explain it better, but we have a timeframe, and we're gonna start getting extremely penal, stiff penalties charged to our port. We have, we're... Am I right, Gary, in saying that? I don't think I could, Mike?
Well, we have, we have industrial water, storm water.
The mic, the mic, Gary.
We have industrial storm water issues that we, it's, it's separate from this. Of course, it is separate. Travis, want to say something?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we're...
There's multiple, there's multiple issues with DEQ, but we have a, we have a 1200Z permit that we have to deal with our own storm water pollution plan, and then, this issue here, um, doesn't fall under the storm, the 1200Z permit, but, but it doesn't, it falls under the clean water, water rack. So, I mean, there's, there's multiple issues going on with, with DEQ, and I think DEQ wanted to put some silt at the end of it, um, to catch that material, but then, once it hits the, the water, then, then we're dredging it, like Travis may want to step in now.
Hi, thank you. Um, DEQ is gonna want a complete plan that's gonna need to be approved by the county, um, from the county first before anything's gonna happen. DEQ's not gonna let, even a silt screen is not gonna cover what we're trying to do. They want the material pulled back away from the water, divert the water, pull the material back through the culvert out that way. They don't, they're not gonna want anything going into the water.
So what kind of equipment is that gonna take, to pull it the other way?
There's, there, there is multiple different ways you can send people in to clean it out, they, Gary actually has been a part of multiple culvert cleaning projects, um, in California. But, the, the whole problem, I guess, that I think that we're trying to get to, I think you guys have a lot of the background of the material, is that we want to get it cleaned just as bad as you do. But the problem is, is that we've been told anything on our side of Lower Harbor Road, the culvert is ours, and the material in it that we're responsible to get rid of. The county has a very small section, the roadway, to get out, we have 400, 500 feet of this pipe to clean out. The port right now feels that the material that's in the pipe is coming from Harbor Hills, everything above us, and now we're being told we're responsible for cleaning it out. So that's, that I think is what we're actually here for, as, as far as this issue, is who's gonna be responsible for the actual cost of cleaning this out, because multiple, these multiple culvert lines that we have, the port has, and this parking lot has two drains that come from the parking lot that run into this culvert, and it's a paved parking lot, so the, the size of rocks, everything that are in it, the sediment that's in it, is coming from across Lower Harbor Road. So, and that's where, really, where we're at right now, is how are we going to, the port can't afford tens of thousands of dollars to clean this pipe out, um, right now, and I know it's an issue to get it cleaned out, um, but the material isn't ours.
Well, this is, this is a time that we all join together and become one team and get this handled.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something that's required, it's gonna make everything better for everyone concerned in the county, so this is one of those times that we get together and work together as a group, and let's get this thing figured out. Mr. Davis?
Uh, according to the Roadmaster, if these culverts are not up to capacity, you just said that yourself.
So, I'm, this particular one, I hired the county, okay, sorry.
They're, they're not up to capacity, and they're old and they're wore out, the pipe been, looking to serve up, the bottoms were out, we're creating sinkholes as we speak, slowly but surely. And, would it not be beneficial and adequate to just somehow put new culverts in, new, new sizes that are up capacity and, and do it right for a change, like you said earlier, not in a willy-nilly and everybody thinks everything's okay and it's really horrible?
That's absolutely true, and you're absolutely right, and I've already, uh, this year, we hired, uh, Dire Partnership to be our contract engineer, and this particular pipe, I had them survey it, size it for capacity due, due to the drains of the hills, it's totally sized appropriately, it definitely has the right elevations in fall, but the thing is, it's full of material, there might be a big hole in that pipe with some hole in it, there might be a big, an offset joint or, or rotten invert where rocks aren't able to work their way out, and so until it's clean, you can't, you won't know if there's any deficiencies or not, but right now for what we can see, the only deficiency is it's full of rock, and it is sized appropriately, I believe for a 50-year rain event, and I, I paid Dire Partnership to take care of that. I don't have the report yet, but on the phone, they told me a few weeks ago that it is sized appropriately, in what I just told you. And that's what you need to do on all these pipes and all these drainages, and, and then come up with a plan where we could work together and, and, and chase funding, because these do cost thousands and thousands, tens of thousands, even million dollars, depending on what you do, and so, just to clean the pipes in the port, I got a cost estimate for the county road to clean its culverts and the port to clean, about $25,000 each, if we're cleaning them with the standard method. Now, the way DEQ wants us to clean them, it's probably gonna cost a million dollars, you know, you know what I'm saying? Because they want us to go backwards, upside down, and not a drop gets into the port, which is totally unrealistic. And so, you know, we're working on that, we're gonna try to get a plan together, and I think the big thing, you know, though, is where all this money's gonna come from, because if we could get it into a standard cleaning operation where it would be about $25,000 for the port and $25,000 for the county, you know, where's the money gonna come from and how, you know, how we're gonna work together?
Ms. Schmelzer, you got a question?
Uh, just a couple of, um, um, does the port or the county in that area have to worry about TMDLs, the total maximum daily loads? Um, because to me, this is actually exceeding it, and I would think that would open us up for funding based on that program.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Same, I don't know either.
Okay, and then, so then, then I have another question, I'm not familiar with Harbor Hills, but is that a recent subdivision?
No, it's very, it's a very old subdivision.
Very old, okay.
Yeah, it's, Harbor Hills is all the houses on this side, on the harbor side of the bridge.
Okay.
That are up on those mountains, and there actually is, Richard, is that, uh, what was that man's name?
Westbrook?
Westbrook, subdivision is up there, that's part of Harbor Hills.
Okay, because if it was newer, I was gonna say, we'd need to look at the developer, because, you know, when you develop a plat, you're also supposed to be looking at the storm water and where is that, that, make sure it's not affecting other properties, but it sounds like those are relatively old developments.
Yeah, that was called HW3, Harbor.
Okay.
Yeah, HW, Hank Westbrook, three, something like that, but, anyway, that subdivision is not even complete today because of drainage and sewage and power and all that, it's very, it's very sparsely developed.
Okay, and I, so another question I have too, is, so, in the state of Oregon, it's my understanding that DEQ is the one who requires the best management practices during construction, you know, they require the silt fences, they have all the guidelines and everything, and if they had been monitoring that, we wouldn't have all, possibly, wouldn't have all of this coming down into these culverts, so, is that, have we talked to DEQ about that perhaps as a negotiation tool, like, hey, you were not installing BMPs, you were not requiring BMPs on this? Like, hey, you were not installing BMPs, you were not requiring BMPs on this construction like the law says. So can you now help us, um, work with us, I guess, on cleaning these culverts out?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
But that's a very good point.
Is that a good approach to take though?
I don't know, you know, if you could go back and talk about silt fencing on projects from 30 years ago type thing. You know, what we have here is just historic drainage issues that have been going off for years. They just haven't been addressed, haven't been maintained, and the pipes are getting older, they're getting rotten. And, uh, like, so we'll have the whole bottom, what happens on these old metal pipes, like rocks tumble across the bottom, they wear out the galvanize. Next thing you know, uh, that we have acidic soil, they eat the bottoms of the pipes out and out. It's just dirt down there and things don't flow efficiently and...
I've got that.
Yeah. Then there's also is where, uh, people just put in pipes and they just put in what, what they had, whether it was an old pipe or an undersized pipe or oversized pipe. They just, that's what they had, they threw it in the whole ground. And, you know, what some of the issues might be that would help, maybe there's a couple of these drainages that could be opened up through the port property where they could be turned back into creeks, you know? Those kinds of things could be, if we could look at that, um, you know, DEQ and DSL, because some of these creeks have fish. And like Double Creek has fish and there's one even called Fish Creek. And, and so, um, there's different ways of skinning this cat if, if we could come up with solutions to put them in a facility plan. And, uh, I think there's funding out there to make these things happen.
So, Mr. Davis, what can we do for you?
Is this, is this a countywide problem? Is this not just in the port? Is this, is this drainage problem with these culverts? It seems to me like this would be a countywide problem in other areas, is it?
I haven't seen any here or heard of any in Port Orford. I mean, our drainage problem here is basically the Rogue River. I was told by a couple of pretty smart people this summer that the Rogue River has a cork in the end of it, um, that cannot be moved right now. So we've been in Washington talking to Senate and Congress, uh, trying to get that cleared out and have made no headway. Um, so, you know, on a larger scale, our rivers, I've heard from Commissioner Gold, the same as, you know, down in, in Brookings, the Chetco, is basically the gravel in the end of that right now is overwhelming. So it's, it looks like it's a, you know, a problem that we're, we're having throughout the entire county on a larger scale. And this is ancillary to that, I'm guessing.
I think it's, if I could, I think it's manifest in the port of Brookings Harbor because the county doesn't have a large unincorporated area that's developed like Harbor and Harbor Hills. There's very dense residential development there unlike any other place in the county situated next to a port. I mean, Gold Beach, you got the city, Wedderburn, but it's nowhere near populated as Harbor. And Port Orford, you got the city and there's not a lot of unincorporated. So I think, I think it's from, as they talked about, the old dense residential development up in the hills above the port of Brookings Harbor. And Commissioner Boyce, I think, yes, the, the fire, you know, and the, and the cause and effect of the silt, what we're talking about here is a, I think it's a, really a much smaller scope view of the port of Brookings Harbor issue related primarily to the identified storm drain system that kind of works its way up the one hill up into those developments. That's kind of what I've been following there.
It's, it's like two things.
Okay.
Yeah. Because that's one that Mr. Huddle just said is these little creeks that come right into, the drains come into the port. But then, that's what these little piles are all in the port. But then there's the overall arching issue with the 40,000 tons. When the Chetco goes in the flood and it's running mud for three weeks, all that mud settles out into the port and that's the 40,000 tons. So we've got two issues going on here.
Absolutely.
But I, but I think from the roadmaster's point of view, from the roads department point of view, it's the, the, the culverting part of the equation. And then from the county's point of view, and Julie Schmelzer, um, you talked about land development, subdividers need to have their, you know, drainage in place and meeting standards and stuff. I think what we've heard is these are older developments, some of them aren't even complete. I think they, they kind of preexisted some of the current code and some of the current knowledge on those kind of things. And that's what we're, I think what we're faced with is a current solution to a preexisting older situation. And, um, again, that's, and what you're proposing, Rich, is to, um, somehow partner with the port to fit, to put our heads together to figure out how to, how to fix these culverting parts right here and these storm drain parts right, right here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And moving forward to with DEQ to figure out what they're going to require us on it?
Yeah, we're going to be working, uh, strongly with DEQ, DSL, US Army Corps of Engineers and ODFW. And we, we have really strict guidelines that we have to follow. And we're not going to go into this project or any part of cleaning or repairing or replacing anything or upgrading until we have our BMPs down solid, we have a, a really solid plan that we're going to win without getting fined. These DEQ's fines are nothing to mess with.
I think we need some more government to help us to regulate some more of this stuff.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I could sense just a little bit of frustration. Um, you mentioned, Commissioner Davis, you mentioned the Department of Environmental Quality. I want the public to know that's listening now, uh, what you're up against, what we're up against. It sure takes the fun out of serving on the port and even the extent of us sitting here. Um, I'm going to bring up just a bit of a, uh, effort made, uh, just two days ago with BC Fisheries. Uh, the, they are making a tremendous effort to follow through with their plans with the DEQ. So we had the one DEQ rep on the phone and with management. And one, one thing I learned, not revealing I shouldn't, but one thing I did learn is that processing plants on the Oregon coast are all dealing with the same thing. And how it relates to this project, in my view, um, and it's not just the Chetco bar, but the sediment, the aggregate, the sheer amount of rock that we're getting coming down the Rogue is coming from the Chetco bar and the Klondike via the Illinois River. Basically, a beautiful pristine twin to the Chetco. Um, so I mentioned a minute ago, we're trying to figure out if we can make that proof, uh, for that amount of damage. And so where we sit around the state, bad enough that we lost our forest, we'd, we'd lost a good part of the Brookings Harbor watershed. I have a tremendous long-term concern for that. 80% of it was burnt. Most of it moderate to severe, as you all know. And so that's the long-term concern. The short-term concern is we're the ones that have to deal with that that fire wasn't put out early on. And it's already kind of been swept under the rug. We had a GAO visit here and thanks to Senator Wyden and Congressman DeFazio, they followed through with that. But now we're not hearing what that report is.
It's going to be out in October from what I hear.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I heard too. Um, so we're left in the short term to deal with this mess and it is beyond a giant headache. I don't want to sound horribly pessimistic, but when it comes to the DEQ, Mr. Chair and the port commission here, um, we're, you know, they threatened to fine us for $9,000. We basically, because our roadmaster and the road department basically did everything they should have done, done and on time, it was just the, uh, the victim of just general circumstances. You mentioned that it's unrealistic, it doesn't matter to them. So at some point, we, I think we just have to say, okay, we're elected public officials, we understand our responsibility. This is wrong. We're going to stop trying to bend over backwards because you won't help us. Meanwhile, look at, look at what we're dealing with. And so if it doesn't come from the governor's office, uh, if it doesn't come, then we're going to have to just get a group of people out here with signs and say, this is what the Department of Environmental Quality is doing to our program. And if that sounds drastic, I don't know what else is left because we sure as heck don't have the money to, and, and the staff to deal with this all. We'll do everything we can and, uh, I, I respect and appreciate and think it's a good council to come up with a plan. Uh, the sooner the better. But in the meanwhile, in the meantime, excuse me, here's where we are. And so, I mean, I might be in our own jail here, but it's, it's, it's getting to be that serious and it's not just Curry County, not just the port of Brookings Harbor, it's all of them down the Oregon coast. We need them to come to the table and help us solve the problem. Thank you, that's too long, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Schmelzer?
Yes, we recently saw some grant announcements from USDA, um, for areas affected by disasters.
That's where I was going, thank you. I, I don't care if it was 30 years or 30 days.
And I think this might be a really good project for that, that we should probably follow up on and see if we can get funding for it. I'm not sure if we're far enough along, but I would think we have enough documentation, especially with these photos and some of the numbers you have that we could take a shot at that. But I also would like to know, I know Jeremy Dumeire, Emergency Management Director is here, and I'd like to hear from him whether he thinks there is any possibility to get hazard mitigation funding because a good portion of this was a result of a forest fire or wildland fire.
Jeremy? And subsequent flooding?
Jeremy Dumeire, Creek County Emergency Management. Uh, so far the port is applied for under two presidential disaster declarations for some hazard mitigation, uh, funding. Uh, they're not related to the storm water issue. They're related to the, basically the silt in the, of the port from the February and April storms. That being said, yes, there is HMGP funding available. I actually just sent Gary a link on that. That funding will come out here. I actually go to Grants Pass in two weeks to learn more about this year's round of grant funding for that. I have invited Gary through that email to attend if he is able to. Uh, so yes, that grant funding is available through HMGP. As far as the $150 million USDA loans and grants program, I would also think that this would apply. However, Curry County does not yet have a designation as to how much we are eligible for of the total. My understanding in talking with Deanna Quimby at the USDA is that we will get approximately $300,000 to $400,000 in eligible program, uh, disbursements. But we have several programs that we are looking at already in Curry County. So it'll be a matter of prioritizing what, uh, the needs are for those funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Dumeire?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, for me. We have to compete for that money with other counties, correct?
The 300 to 400,000 I referenced would be Curry County's, uh, overall available, the available funds. The HMGP that I mentioned and invited Gary to, that is a competition. It's a three to three and a half million dollar pot for the state of Oregon. Historically, 110 entities have applied for that, uh, roughly a third of which are successful.
Commissioner Gold?
So would you say our chances of getting some grant money would be much higher if we combined our, our sources here or our effort?
Absolutely. I was actually looking at the most recent natural hazard mitigation plan, which is 2016. We are currently in the update of that plan and the port is, uh, a part of that. Uh, and it actually identifies storm water systems in that hazard mitigation plan. So by working together, yes, we would be better positioned to go after those funds.
Commissioner Boyce?
Uh, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Richard. I did, thanks. All right.
Yes, sir. Into the mic.
When we go for all these grants and monies for projects, whether it be the county, the state or the port, uh, we have to pay for so many studies before actual groundbreaking gets off. And that's the frustration with me, with DEQ, is the possibility of making it so difficult, wants to drag stuff backwards on a culvert uphill as our roadmaster was talking. That's just like, I mean, and we do, I do agree with court that we need to take a, not an aggressive stand, but a stand and say, hey, we, will you work with us? Will you work with the county and the port somehow? Because these studies, I've seen it for 30 years, just eat up project money left and right and the project never gets done.
I have to agree.
This is something we have to deal with.
Correct. And that's just one of the frustrations in, in, in my mind.
I'm saying the county and the port have to deal with.
Correct. And I'm very excited about the partnership.
We need, we need to get a partnership established and move forward with that, so...
Not, not only in the culvert situation are we excited about a partnership with the county, but in other, other discussed recent items.
You asked what you could do, we could do?
Yes, sir.
I think we have, I think we've heard a pretty good roadmap to develop a plan and kind of get our act together and identify, we've identified the problem. How might we address that? But I don't think we're going to get very far with this without some legislative interest. Um, I think legislative nudge to DEQ might help, um, with this issue. I'm extremely frustrated about the Estuary and Gold Beach. We're eliminating fish habitat on the excuse of helping fish, which I just don't understand. Um, so that's a discussion as well that we're going to have to have with not only DEQ but the Corps of Engineers about what do we do to mitigate all this gravel? I mean, these two rivers move a huge amount of gravel.
That's actually going to happen in a few weeks.
Is it? Okay. Um, but anyway, if we can get, get the planning done, get this identified and get a little push on the legislative side to say, you know, we, we cannot continue to put roadblocks in front of these people who are trying to fix the problem. Uh, if we have to clean that culvert out and put mud in the water, okay, we'll put up silt fences, we'll do what we'll have to do, but we have to have a practical solution to this or we're, this never changes. I mean, it, and, and I think, at least from my experience in another state with state government, it's going to take that kind of push to get those people to do something, to help us.
If both commissions would be okay with it, I'd be willing to, um, organize a meeting with staff, Rich, Jeremy, Gary, and sit down with the, um, Governor's Regional Solutions Team, Alex Campbell from that, explain to him the problems, um, and let him know that we need support, we need the funding and he can work with. So what they do is on that regional solutions team, they have a representative from DEQ and we can talk to them and explain the situation and see how they can help us navigate that process. They also have somebody from ODOT on there, somebody from Business Oregon. But we'll sit down with that group and say, look, we're trying to do it, but you're, you know, you're, you're making it impossible for us. So if the, if the committee, commissioners are okay with that, I'd be willing to...
It's good.
I'm good.
Set that up?
Very good.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
I'd like to be involved in that. And actually Senator Hurd and Representative Brock Smith, uh, if they could have been here today would be, but they're going to be here from now and I'll, I'll make sure. It's very important and that's, and that connection with the governor's office, uh, I just made a note on Alex Campbell, that's a very good place to start too. Should have done it before now, but thank you.
Yeah, because I will say Alex came down when we had the scientists here on the rope. Alex actually came down to be on that as well. So he does have an interest in this. He's got a proven interest because he's been there, so it's good to know. Commissioner Boyce?
Also, I've, I've been pushing as hard as I can for a grant writer and we just haven't landed right side up on that yet. Uh, but I assume the port does not have a, uh, individual grant writer that you're able to use? Do you do that within your system? Uh, the road department has a part-time assistant, uh, but that's, that's part of our long-term goal is to have somebody that comes, comes on board. And it's really too bad we didn't get this done initially because now after the nine county declaration that we all qualified for, um, we, we could have been in a little better position to move forward quickly. So we're, I'm sorry, but we're playing catch-up a little bit. So do you have a grant writer for the port?
Port, the port uses our engineer for helping us out do the grant writer. So it's between port staff and engineer, we, that's what we're doing. But we would love to have a grant writer that's like official grant writer.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. We represented well, but we could all find improvement, yes.
So the road department's moving fast towards this project and other projects in the county by hiring Dyer Partnership as our contract engineer, by hiring past Public Works Director Laura Lee Snook to be our grants writer. And so we're trying to put these things together as we speak. And I'm going to be reaching out to you for a task order approval to update the Harbor Hills and the port area, not the port, but the port area facility, storm water facility plan. And I suggest that maybe the port may want to partner in on that and get a quote from Dyer Partnership as well for their, things of inside the port that they're concerned about and have a complete master plan to help us pursue funding because, you know, these grants are highly competitive. And if you have an engineered plan, it raises your grant score. Anything you can do to raise your grant score of, it's going to help you, uh, get, uh, funding. But you also have to be prepared, if it's a million dollar project, you've got to have $100,000 probably to put for matching funds or something that you could exchange for, as a match. So, uh, but I think if we work together, uh, we can make things happen.
I'm all for doing that expedition. I'm all for doing that expeditiously.
Okay. I'm on it.
Thank you.
What else can we talk about?
I thought the next thing was economic development.
You want me to mention it first?
Go ahead.
I do have one thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry that I, I'm not sure if I'm missing it, so we're, I'm just going to ask. So the material that's in the culvert, and I know it's necking down back to what I feel the issue that we're here to discuss with the board. From talking to Richard, the material that is in the culvert on our side of Lower Harbor Road, we've been told is our responsibility. We feel it's not our responsibility. So, and by talking to Richard, I feel that between the two boards, do you guys, I guess my question is, do you guys feel that the material in the culvert that has been coming from Harbor Hills is our responsibility to remove?
Well, I think it's been stated at this meeting that we'd like to work together to remove that. So let's not try and assess, in my opinion, whose it is, whose problem it is, whatever. We'll work together as a team to get this done.
Okay. Thank you.
I just think it might open a pot up that we don't need to get open. Let's not try and lay blame. Let's try and find a fix.
It's not lay blame.
Not blame, but responsibility.
Just assume that it's a 50-50 problem that we're going to work through.
Absolutely. That's what my hope is, and I hope this board is in agreement, and your board is in agreement, that it is a 50-50 partnership that we're going to work through this.
And, and other projects.
Yes, and other projects, yes.
I just want to say, you clean the culverts out, you still haven't taken care of the source of the problem.
Right.
And so you need to come up with some sort of solution that's going to be long-term, so.
And I think with Richard, we, we have talked about that. We need, this long-term solution of it is getting more sediment catch basins put in, whether they be on port property or somewhere else, the port is more interested in granting easements so we can get these things installed to help catch this material before it fills up the pipes and hits the basins.
One moment, counsel. You've had your hand.
Well, I, I believe that, the way I look at it is with the aging infrastructure, that I'm sure a lot of those stormwater culverts and whatever have deteriorated in so many places. And until, you know, we can come up with a solution to fix that, we're always going to have this, these rocks and sediment and stuff ending up down there.
Counsel?
The question I had is, what's the geographic area of the port district as the, as the entity? Not so much just the port where the operations are, but what is the geographic area of, I guess, your taxing base? How, how big is the port district itself, like?
California border to
Pissel River.
Okay. So there's a lot of people in the port district. Okay. Good. And some of the, and, good. That's just a question I had because ultimately, what I've seen is that you come up with a plan for capital improvements, and then you figure out how you're going to chop that up into little tiny bits that everyone can contribute to it. So when you say port, county, we're talking about citizens, citizens, really. And so then it's just a matter of getting a fair formula to attribute and spread the costs around.
I can think of several ways that we might go look at that as well.
But that's, and that's what the engineering firms are good at, but anyhow, so there's just, there's just a lot of ways to do it, but it just, and so your basically people are our people. Your, our citizens are in the port district. And so when we talk about, is it a port district problem or a county problem? It's the people in the area who get the benefit of the port and the county, who, you know, are ultimately going to
Two-thirds of the county lives in the port district.
No, again, so there's, there are a lot of, there are a lot of resources to draw from to solve this.
Mr. Davis?
Can we, could, could we talk about corporate money?
Come on in. You got some?
I'm, I'm going to rely on Chair Chris.
Well, I'm just, there's, there's some things that are, that I'm looking at doing in the county. One is our fairgrounds, and the other is the port in South County. I've said since well before I ran for office that it's, it's a gem. I mean, those are things that are moneymakers. I mean, they are literal cash cows in this county. And I am right now beginning a search for corporate money to look at maybe sponsoring our fairgrounds, sponsoring the Port of Harbor, hanging a big sign over your port that says Sponsored by Ford, or having some, some kind of sponsorship through them. There are hundreds of millions of dollars that are out there in corporate money that want their name, and I'm sure something like Apple wouldn't want their name on the Port of Brookings Harbor, but maybe Caterpillar would, maybe John Deere would, because we're a rural farming community. We're, you know, maybe some mill that makes chainsaws, Husqvarna or one of those companies might want to be a partner sponsor, and not, maybe not one large sponsor, but maybe ten small. So that's what I'm going to devote the next few months of, some of my time to, is looking for corporate money to come into rural Oregon, in Curry County, and spend a little of their money here, that, that these people spend our money in their stores and ask them to partner with us. There's a lot of that out there that it's really, I think a lot of people are just afraid to ask for it. And they write it off every year, at the end of every year. Rather than let's all get new corporate cars this year, let's donate a million dollars to Curry County in something. I don't know. But these are things that I'm going to look to pursue. I've spoken with Ms. Schmelzer about it, and actually Summer Mattson as well. And we're going to start to look at going after some corporate money for some corporate sponsorships.
That's awesome. That's exciting. And that's outside the box.
I've always lived outside the box. I had to knock to get in.
Right, right. But that's, right. There's a lot of money out there, and if you don't go ask for it, you'll never get it.
If you look at every major sporting complex in the nation, they're all sponsored by somebody. Most little league baseball fields are sponsored by somebody. That's, that's the, that's the full circle of it. A little league baseball field is usually sponsored by Joe's Grill, you know, and he pays for the grass mowing and the blah, blah, blah. And basketball and football teams are all sponsored by somebody, so that corporate money's out there. It's easy, I think. You just got to keep knocking on doors and, and ringing the phone, and you'll find, you'll find some people that'll give it. Yes, sir.
With that in mind, I would remind us all that the Port of Brookings Harbor, from a recreational standpoint, is the third most heavily utilized port in Oregon. I would look to Yamaha, Honda, Koffa Marine, who make Mercury outboards. I mean, we sell a lot about for them, just by having that facility.
And that's what I'm going to look to do, is wherever we're looking, we're going to look for sponsors that do that kind of business there. I think I've spoken with several people about, I'd love to see a great big Ferris wheel down there in the port that you can see from the road. We've got to give people in this county a reason to park their car and stop in our county, to spend their money. What is going to make you pull off the road? And that's how we have to look. From an economic development standpoint, we have to look at, because no one, you know, we don't have, we can't be Santa Monica. You know, we, we don't have room for another 100,000 homes in this county, so we've got to find a way to pay the bills. So one of those ways is to get somebody to pull off the road and spend a day in Curry County. What are those things? And that's the mindset that we have to have. What will make somebody pull off the road and say, I want to spend the day in Curry County? A big Ferris wheel? That's what made Santa Monica, when it was almost bankrupt, look where they are now. I've talked to you about maybe a, a gondola type of a cable system down there that I've already spoken to a company in the Netherlands about. They're willing to partner with some of that, but they want corporate money for it. To go down over the port and come back up over the highway into that hill on the backside, to have that view for a day ride? Bring your whole family for $25, or you rent a gondola car for the next two hours? Those are reasons to make people stop. And while they're here, they're going to eat in a restaurant, they're going to fill their car up with gas, they're going to shop in our stores. That's, that's how we build economic development.
The gondola, they put it in the trees and mysteries, and it doubled their business.
These are, these are the kind of things that you've got to, you know, we've got to, this board, along with Ms. Schmelzer, Summer, these are the things that we're looking at to help build this county and put it back in the black and get it back up on its wheels. And that's how we're going to pay the bills, because we don't have the timber anymore. There's so many things we've lost, we can't even get pilt now.
And we may be losing some fishing money, too. And that's really scary. And we're talking about a lot of
Because of the whales, yeah.
Millions. California's already losing it.
So on the Ferris wheel, I just have to add that Commissioner Pash
You're not going to shoot that out of the saddle, are you?
I'm not shooting that out of the saddle. It was actually Gary and his staff, and Commissioner Pash and I, and I can't remember, Summer was there, but we all sat down one day and we talked about, just thinking outside the box, and Commissioner Pash actually went back and researched what it would cost for the Ferris wheel, how much you would charge a ticket, and how much money you could make. And, and he deducted insurance from it and accounted for different seasons, and it did look pretty lucrative. So I do want to share with you, though, something that I was talking with our Parks Director about, and that was about the campground down at the port. I don't know if you're interested in partnering with the county on that, but when we met a couple months ago with Gary, we've, we couldn't help at that point. But the Parks Director did a little research, and he got back to me yesterday. He's aware of a way we can get around that, so to speak. And that is because there is an entrance and an exit to that campground area. We would be eligible for the county to actually lease the property, and then the county would run the main maintenance and oversee the operations of the facilities. The county retains all state license fee increase and the 20% of net revenue, and then the port would get 80% of net revenue. So that's a, and with that money that he's also eligible to do through that, through that program, we can rebuild the bathrooms. And I talked to him about benches, things of that nature. He said yes. He said we might even be able to get the money to have removable steel pilings in the parking lot, walkway to prevent log damage as another thing. So that's all something, you know, if the commission would be interested, something to think about. I mean, we don't, we don't want to own it. We just want to help you. We, of course, would make some money off of it, but you'd be making 80% off of it. Our board has not discussed that yet. Like I said, we just got this information yesterday. But if it's something you'd be interested in, we'd be willing to have our Parks Department go down and do a presentation to you and get those balls rolling. I mean, like I said, we, if we can get that bathroom paid for out of these park monies and some pilings, et cetera, that's less money the port has to spend on that that they can then spend on other infrastructure.
The only, the only thing I think the, the port would be responsible for that is the insurance. We would want the port to, to keep its, you know, the liability insurance on, on the park. Commissioner Gold?
One thing I know when I was Commissioner down there, the electricity down in the RV park was sorely lacking. And I would talk to Josh about upgrades in the electric situation down there.
You have a board that thinks out of the box right now.
Is that something you'd be interested in meeting with staff on and pursuing?
Personally, I would be greatly interested in it.
I think so.
Great, then.
I'm interested.
Okay.
It would eliminate a lot of stuff that we have going on right now. It's going to cost us a lot of money that we don't have. It's going to take us a very long time to obtain, and this partnership, this, like you were talking about. There, again, we would have more pull and more power to obtain funds as a partnership. Even though it's an 80-20 deal, we would still be a partnership in reaching out to try and find funds. Correct?
Right.
So therefore, that would be easier.
Correct.
And then Julie, what, what time of a lease are you, are you considering? Has that been mentioned?
You know, because we just got this yesterday, we haven't talked about it. The board hasn't talked about it.
It's 25 years.
Well, I know when you're, when we're looking at social security bar, we're looking at a 50-year lease down there. So I think it really depends what type of infrastructure and what it costs the county. You know, if the county doesn't have much of an investment in it, we can go with a short, shorter lease, like 20 years, 25 years. If we're actually taking county funds and actually putting the infrastructure in, of course, then we look at longer-term leases because we have an investment in it. With this, if we can get the grant funding and, you know, county staff helps with it, and there's not much of an investment, we can look at a shorter-term lease. But what I will do is I will work with Gary, and we'll set up a meeting to come down and talk to you, your commission, about the options and what would be involved with that.
So one of the discussion points could be, and when the county puts in money for upgrades or whatever, the county would use their own personal monies for, for development or upgrades, would that be, would that come off of the gross income?
No.
And would your investment come off the gross income?
I would have to ask Josh how he figured it out.
That would be needed to discuss, though, right?
Right, but the way the state RV system is set up and the campground system is set up, we usually don't have to do a lot of investment in it, of our own investment. Because you're getting RV fees to create RV spaces, and so the state helps give money to create those spaces so we can offer more recreation. But I'll have Josh, like I said, I'll work with Gary, and we'll have him come down and talk with you about that.
I, I personally, and I don't know what the rest of you would think, but I, I think we're getting a lot of shaking the head of yes.
I've seen everyone shake their head yes.
Because we've learned, I've learned one thing from Gary Donbey, is we're not in the RV business, we're not in the ice cream business, we're not in the laundry mat business. It just, when we got rid of the cold storage and the ice plant, how much money did we start making a month just by getting rid of those?
Eight thousand.
$3,000 a month or $17,000?
Well, the leases themselves are $2,000 a month, but if we didn't have to spend any money.
But we did all the maintenance and all that.
Right.
$17,000 in our pocket per month. We're getting rid of two businesses that we didn't have any business being in business in, or landlord, or this land. So if somebody wanted to lease the land, which would be the RV part, I would be greatly interested in that.
Okay. Gary?
Yep. We actually have a special meeting next Thursday. I don't know if that's too soon, but our special meeting is talking about our RV park. If that's possible to
Sure. Do you know offhand, Gary, what time that meeting is?
10:00 AM at our meeting room at the port. On the 24th, sorry. Next Thursday, next Thursday, 24th.
I will see if he's
10:00 AM.
I'll see if he's available for that.
Okay.
All right.
So I know there's some other things we wanted to talk about, economic development. I don't know if the port had something else, but we just wanted to share some ideas with you and some things that we've thought about at the county. One day Sue and I, I know, sat there with some crazy ideas. Chris and I sat there with crazy ideas. He actually, we actually found some wonderful sculptures and art that was pretty cheap, but I know that you've put together like an art council that helps out with the port. Is that correct? So if possible, we'd like to have our staff join your group to share with some ideas, and they're very familiar with the resources that might be available and different ideas and trends with ports, things of that nature that we'd like to help you with. Like I said, we've got lots of crazy ideas. We'd like to throw at you and see what sticks and see what we can help with.
When would you like to have the meeting?
Do you want to do it the 24th? Well, I guess you tell me when your art group meets.
That works.
Okay. So I'll see if staff is available for that one on that. And then, just so you know, too, that we do have, the county does have promotions. We did have a number of years ago, we stopped for about four years, but we're back into the promotions business where we do have the Facebook, the social media, we have staff that can make films, promotional films, that can be used to draw in more tourists. So I do want you to keep that in mind when it comes to marketing, what you have at the port, and making sure people are aware of that. We do have those resources. We don't charge for those. We do them as part of our tourism promotion, so that's something to keep in mind with, too. And then the last thing I just wanted to talk to you real quick about was the signs, the signage. I noticed when I was at the RV park this past weekend or the weekend before, the signs that you have, the informational signage, I see they're faded. And I just wanted to let you know that DEQ does have money for people to replace those educational signs. Whenever someone pays a fine to DEQ, the money goes into a pot, and that's one of the things that they then give money for with those funds. So since the county paid a, might be paying a fine down there, maybe we could recoup
We're not paying no stinking fine.
Maybe we could get that money for a sign. And when economic development and tourism comes down to talk with you or meet with your art group, I will have them bring that information along as well. Okay? And Ken, are you the contact on that, then?
Yes.
What's your last name, Ken?
R-A-N-G-E. Are you familiar with the Art on the Boardwalk abandon?
Yes, yes.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Great. Bandon Port is primal.
We've already got the PBAA, the, the ports behind it. The PBAA is going to be the curator for the whole event.
That's so exciting.
Yep.
Good.
The art community is very much behind you.
Good.
That's great.
All right.
All righty. Anything else?
What about TLT funds?
So with the transit lodging tax at the current time, the way the ordinance
So with the transit lodging tax, at the current time, the way the ordinance is written, you know, there's so much that goes back to the county for admin and services and some goes for promotions. This particular year, um, the, the funds, a good share of the funds are going towards the event center. But we do have a promotions committee that is going to be meeting in November. Part of the ordinance with that tax, um, with that ordinance required there to be a promotions committee. So that promotions committee is going to start meeting in November and they will discuss, um, how they feel the tax dollars should be spent. Now I will say this, the people that are paying into that tax right now are the hoteliers, the Airbnbs, et cetera, that are in the unincorporated areas of the county. I'm guessing, I'm not sure, but I'm guessing they'd want to see more of the promotions money spent in the unincorporated areas. Would be my guess, but I'm not on that committee. But, um, that's something I think they could definitely talk about is what can they do to help the port?
And that's why everyone needs to be involved in these kind of committees. You know, we need to have people from different areas in this county involved in these committees so that they have a voice in what happens with that money. Commissioner?
I think it's important that you understand where the money's going this TLT. 70% goes towards tourism and we've already earmarked 50% of that 70%, in other words, 35% to go to the fair. That other 35% will be up for grabs and I would like to see the port start grabbing a little of that.
We do have, one of the members on that, one of the members on that promotions committee does have a business down at the port. Um, so we do, so there is going to be a representation from that area on that committee.
I don't have anything further. Do you have anything further?
No.
All right. So thanks for making the trip north. We're going to adjourn the workshop, take a 10-minute recess and then we'll re-enter back into executive session. Thanks everyone for coming.